That doesn't sound great.
Whose fault is that, Jeremy's?
Hartley.
Okay, looks like we have everyone here. Somebody's got their volume on. Is that you, Jeremy?
Are we better now?
I just heard Anita's voice on on reloop or something, yeah.
Yeah.
Delay, yeah.
Delay, alright.
Anita, you look confused. It's just because somebody had their speaker on and was playing the YouTube channel. So there's a delay and then it came back through.
Thank you for explaining that, Ethan.
Okay, I guess we'll get started. It's a little after 3:30. Today is Tuesday, April 12th. This is the Camden Planning Workshop. We've decided to focus for this meeting, this workshop, on short-term rentals. First, we'll go to a, this is an open hearing. It's live streamed, not a hearing, but an open workshop. People are free to attend, the public, and we can offer opportunities to comment if that seems appropriate at times. Let's see, so first, there's an item on the agenda. Is any non-agenda items? Jeremy?
No, other than we have a meeting on Thursday, right? One o'clock on Thursday in person at Hanford.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay. So not seeing anything else for non-agenda items. We'll move right into the meat of it, and again, this is the short-term rental workshop. Jeremy has sent out a copy of the unhosted registration ordinance and can speak to that. I think we touched on it last time at the end of our last meeting about the enforceability issue. And then I had sent out some sample ordinances and FAQs and that sort of thing from various towns. And Jeremy was kind enough to include those in the agenda as well. So, or Jeremy or and/or Jeannie were kind enough to include those in the agenda. And so if, you know, those are just pieces that I had found by my quick look around. Obviously, there are towns that don't regulate at all, and there may be towns that have something better going, but it's just a starting point, a jumping off point for us to begin our discussion. And that's really what this is right now, is a discussion to sort of talk about what other towns are doing, what we might be interested in doing here, and get a feel for where the members of the board sit on all of this. I did talk to Jeremy via email briefly, and he thought it would be good to start out with him going over a few of, going over what the status quo is right now in the town of Camden. I think that'd be very helpful to set the framework for which we'll be working from. So Jeremy, you have the floor.
Perfect, thank you. I will say, I'm gonna try to get this up on our website, the town's website, a little more prominently, so we can at least get information out there, maybe provide the link to this YouTube workshop, and at least try to get some feedback, because I think it's important that we do try to, especially in this issue, reach out and get a lot of feedback. So the town right now, the way we regulate short-term rentals, there are, there's two ways. In the zoning ordinance, if you look at the definition of dwelling unit, and this is for a dwelling unit, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't count for, say, a room rental, if you're renting somebody's room, but if you're renting a dwelling unit, the minimum of that, that minimum stay is seven nights. So you can't stay less than seven nights. That's what they have to rent them for, and that's in the definition section. Mark's got a question.
Yeah. Is that seven nights or six nights, seven days?
It says seven nights.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
If it's not, I'll clarify it for you all, but I thought I, if I remember correctly, that's what it is. But, and then that's the only way we do that, and that would be for a dwelling unit. Again, that doesn't cover a room rental, and a dwelling unit is something, we had this discussion a while ago. Dwelling unit is somewhere where you live, cook, eat, sleep. You know, so you have to have a bathroom, bedroom.
Jeremy, can I just cut in again?
Yes.
Follow up on Mark's question. In the past, I thought we sort of read the short-term, what we did have for vacation rental ordinances. Didn't we have something which said seven nights? But it was basically like, you could rent for shorter period, but it would be only once every seven days.
Well, okay, that's a good point.
The language, the language is seven consecutive days.
Yeah, right.
I mean, six nights, seven.
But that's in the new one, or is that in the old one?
That's in the version.
That's the definition in the zoning ordinance. That's never changed.
Yeah.
And so, so there's been an interpretation or kind of a policy that I think is unwritten, that as long as someone is, you know, if someone wants to rent less than that to somebody for, say, four nights or three nights, they could do, do that as long as they didn't rent any other period during that seven, seven consecutive day period. I think that runs afoul of the definition, to be honest with you. So that said, the other way we regulate them is through what the Select Board put to voters last year, was through a licensing provision, kind of under police powers, more than under land use and zoning, similar to licensing, and I'm not saying there's the similar type of licensing requirements, but licensing like hotels, restaurants, those kinds of facilities. You guys, it's not in the zoning ordinance, it's in a licensing ordinance, if you will. And that's what we did, and I, and I can bring that up if you'd like, but it's pretty, what that zone, what that ordinance, and the voters approved it last year. It says that we regulate unhoseded, or you were required to register your unhoseded rental. And there's some provisions in there. The challenge with that for us is the way we defined unhoseded, and we talked about it the last time. It's nearly impossible. That's six months plus one day. Someone has to live there. And then, then it's a, if someone's not living there that long, then it becomes an unhoseded rental. Trying to track, the only way to track these and regulate these on an enforcement end is to really hire a firm, consulting firm, that does this for a living. They have their computer models, you know, you know, algorithms that they are able to scan every platform that's on the web, and they can determine which properties are where. We have no ability to do that. You and I couldn't go onto Airbnb today and figure out the exact map and lot and street address for every rental that's available in Camden. You just can't figure that out. So they can do that. Unfortunately, they can't do that using this, using our definitions. None of the firms are able to do that. So there is a need to look at tweaking either that ordinance, which is a lot like the Kenny Bunkport, what Ethan sent around. They, theirs is not in the zoning ordinance. They regulate them through licensing provisions, similar to what we are. They have some inspection requirements and yada, 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 but we don't. And all we have to, if you have an unhoseded rental, that means if you, if someone lives there, less than six months, and they rent it as a primary residence, and they rent it at some point, that's an unhoseded rental. They have to register those. We have not had any registrations thus far. So you know. Go ahead, Pat.
Oh, thank, I didn't know if we could ask questions now, but.
Absolutely.
What about using primary residence as your guide versus hosted or unhoseded?
Well, that's the same, it's the same thing. It's nearly impossible for them to scan to figure out what some.
Isn't a primary residence also your, the homestead exemption?
Yes, but not everyone, not everyone's client files for the homestead exemption, to be honest with you.
Well, I can see why, because it's not that apparent, but it could be one way to start to look at it. And also too, I mean, aren't there, you know, every primary residence can be flagged by other data points, right? Like, I don't know, driver, there are other ways to, I think, find what a primary residence is, isn't there?
There is, but the practical and efficient way to do that for a municipality to try to enforce that and administer that is impossible. It's just, it's a no-win. You have to, your, your ordinances need to line up in some fashion with the way the platforms work. And that's just the reality. So I will tell you, I mean, I think this is gonna be part of your discussion. I just wanted to kind of lay a framework of where we are. So that's how we regulate them. There are ways to.
I was, just to, sort of to Pat's point, one of the things you have to remember is that like, Airbnb and VRBO, when you, when you look at properties, they don't give you the actual street address of any property. So you can look, and you can, you can look in Camden and see how many properties there are, but you can't actually get the listing and the address information, so you can't compare it to a list of, you know, you can't look at a property and then pull it up and say, oh, does that person claim that as their primary residence?
Yeah, no, I understand.
Really hard to get that information.
Right, yeah, no, I realize that.
Right, I mean familiarity with certain houses, and you can, you know, just based on the picture.
You can, you can figure it out.
You can do, you can do that.
That is, but, but it's, that's a lot of man.
And they do often show, and then, and people do different things, but they tend to show on a map, I think, on Airbnb, a general.
Right.
In the neighborhood.
It's very labor-intensive to try and.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Ordinate all that data.
Well, I'd be curious.
Method.
I'd be curious to see how other towns run it, because some of them do, I mean, from what little I saw in the other ordinances, some of them do base it on primary residence. So they must have a way that they're trying to track.
Well, yeah, so let me just, let me just kind of finish where, where I was going. So there's two ways to do this. I mean, you can town municipalities, there were three ways. You can do nothing. And then you can work to have a licensing ordinance or a registration ordinance that has, generally, it's more about, again, licensing, not zoning. And then there's what Bar Harbor did, and a Cape Elizabeth did too, to a certain extent. I think Cape Elizabeth, or maybe it was Bar Harbor, did a combo. They did licensing and zoning in Bar Harbor. Kenny Bunkport was pretty much straight-up licensing. So you can do it that way, but I think it's important, you know, there's a lot of factors and a lot of different entities that have an interest in this. You know, and it's important to try to grasp and understand, Ethan spoke to it, I think, pretty eloquently last time, where, you know, at Airbnb, if you're renting a home, you end up living in that home, in essence, when you're on vacation and you're cooking for your family, and you can bring your dogs with you. A lot of things you can't do at inns or bed and breakfasts or at hotels. So it's a different, different thing. There's also life safety things that, you know, I, from a building professional, I serve on the state's Building Codes and Standards Board, and from a, from a life safety perspective, you know, in essence, these homes are transient rentals, like a hotel. You go to a hotel or a bed and breakfast, they have emergency plans in place. They've got sprinkler systems in some, most. You've got emergency lighting and, you know, all this stuff. In a hotel, or in a, in a bed and breakfast, or, I mean, in a short-term rental, you don't know the lay of the land. You, it's not your house, you're unfamiliar to it. So there's a lot of life safety things that should come to play. And I think Kenny Bunkport tries to address those in their licensing ordinance. And I think those are very appropriate things to look at. They also look at things like parking and impacts on neighborhoods. So it's either, you know, you can do it one way, you can do it both ways. That's the discussion that's in front of you all. I mean, I think we're really early on in this discussion. And I think looking at what other communities are doing is appropriate, and I think looking at communities that are similar to ours is, you know, is appropriate. I do want you folks to kind of lead this conversation and, and discussion on where the town should go. I want to be here to support you, but I don't, I think this is one of those ones that I don't really want to drive. I, I, I hope you understand. I mean, I kind of, I don't know, I'm a little conflicted on it, and I think this really needs to be a town planning board function. You know, like really diving into this and what.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate, Jeremy, for you to to sit on the sidelines essentially on this one and provide any input, expertise and knowledge, and whatever that you have to help us. But this is a policy-driven, you know, action if we go anywhere with this, and it really should be a planning board initiative. Go ahead, Anita.
Thank you. I, I think the way, it was very helpful to look at three different towns' approaches, for one thing. I definitely had favorites and non-favorites. And I think there were different elements brought forward in each one, and some elements completely forgotten in some, et cetera. It's a hard thing to get our minds around, but, but I would propose that we begin by taking the helicopter view and saying, what is the problem as we see it? And what are the issues we're trying to solve? Instead of just kind of pulling, I mean, it, it's helpful to pull from what other people have done, and what other towns have done. And, I mean, I think we could do a pretty good job just with the three that, that Ethan presented to us. But I kind of like the idea of saying, what are some of the problems that we perceive in this whole issue? And actually make a list, and how, how can we solve those? What are the problems of solving it this way versus that way? And just get, get a framework built first, so that we can address those problems in an intelligent way, instead of getting into nitty-gritties and that sort of thing.
Go ahead, Mark.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna back and eat up on that. I was gonna say the exact same thing. We need to start out by saying, where are we going with this and why?
Yeah, I totally agree.
You know, not just say, well, you know, every, you know, we feel like we need it. We need to, we need to determine why we need it and how we're gonna proceed. And, and the point is, I mean, and I feel very strongly about the fact that when, when you're telling somebody what they can and cannot do with their property, you better have something concrete to back it up. You know, why?
Right, and I, and I think that, you know, I think the idea of banning short-term rentals is probably not on the agenda, right? I mean, that's not where we're headed. But I think there's rationale to limit license, you know, inspect, those sorts of things, I think are all, all reasonable. I'll go first on some of the, the why. For me, what, what I think, the, 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 the long, the short-term rental market has created a two-pronged problem for affordable housing. And the two prongs are, first, that the units themselves are removed from the market for people looking for long-term, you know, year-to-year leases, people who want to work in town and, and, and live in town. Teachers, policemen, firemen, firepeople, you know, restaurant workers, all these people who can no longer afford to live in town because they can't find a place to rent. So by removing so many units off of the, the long-term market, the, the standard rental market, short-term rentals cause a shortage. And then additionally, there's evidence to show that short-term rentals increase the actual cost, and it's not just the supply, but the cost of regular rental housing. I think the, there's an article that I have, and I'd be happy to share it with folks. Talks about a 10% increase in Airbnb listings leads to a 0.42% increase in rents and a 0.76% increase in house prices. Now, that sounds pretty minor, except when you consider that we haven't had a 10% increase in Airbnb rentals. We've had an 800% increase in Airbnb rentals. That number is not exact for Camden. It's, you know, just sort of considered sort of nationwide, but I'd be surprised, and we're talking about since, I think, like 2013. That means then that you're looking at, what that amounts to, oh, I'm sorry, it's from 2011. That would be responsible for a 33.6% rent increase in that time period. And the median household income has gone up 18% between 2011 and 2016. So it's doubled, basically, the increase in rents over increase in income. Go ahead, Jeremy. You're muted.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great point. I, I just want to also tell, and I wanted to mention it earlier, Granicus, which is one of these firms that assesses.
That's what I'm looking at, actually, yep.
Okay, so I'm meeting with Granicus on Friday. I'm having a Zoom meeting with them, and they've done this for me in the past. And they're probably one of the better firms that does this. They're gonna give me a complete layout of lay of the land in Camden. They're gonna scrub the, all of the, the, the online platforms over the last few days and come up with the number, the type of units, the, you know, the average rent cost, all of those things. I'm gonna get that, I should get that report on Friday.
That's so funny, because.
The, it's been, the meeting's been request to reschedule, so if you promise something based on that, then hold up.
No, that's fine.
I just sent out to everybody that article that I was citing, and it is from Granicus, that Jeremy's raised.
I just wanted to say that I think we'll get some good data here in the next, next couple of weeks, for sure, that, that I can share with you all.
Yep.
That's all. Thank you.
So that was my little spiel on the, on the affordable housing, and I'd like to go around the room and ask each person to talk about what their thoughts are on why we would be regulating or limiting or whatever. We intend to do short-term rentals, and Mark, you can go ahead and go first.
Well, I I understand what you're saying about about workforce housing, affordable housing. Fact is, I mean, the cost of real estate is the cost of real estate. And you know, you have to, if, if properties are selling for X amount of dollars, you have to be able to justify why it's worth X amount of dollars. And the real estate industry now is promoting the fact that, well, you can get X, X for vacation rentals to help assist in your, your cost. So, you know, some people, they say, well, you know, may, okay, maybe I'll, maybe I will rent the place for a month or so, and just to justify the additional cost.
But what are we talking about there? You're talking about a hosted or unhoseded property?
Well.
Because I think the focus is on unhoseded, and I'm not saying we have to limit it to that. But thinking, thinking about someone from out of state just buys up a house and says, I'm gonna turn this into short-term rentals as an investment property. That would be a, a problem. That's, that's, that's a problem for me.
Yeah, I, I, and I agree. Okay, and I've, and I've always said, you know, there's a difference between, between a commercial vacation rental and an owner-occupied vacation rental. Which is what we're talking about, hosted and unhoseded. I think, you know, the, the reason we should be looking at this is is townwide protecting the neighborhoods. And, you know, that's where I see the biggest impact. Bayview Street is, you know, Bayview Street is dark in the wintertime. Some of it is, yes, because it's, there's summer homes, but a lot of it is, I mean, there's a lot of vacation homes right there on Bayview Street. And it's no longer a residential neighborhood. And that that is what I think is hurts this town in overall. As far as, as far as.
So just, just to, just to put a finer point on that, Mark, you're talking about more, the more, more the idea of vacant houses being a problem, or the fact that they're, they're transient in the summer, or both?
Well, both, both. The fact that they're transient, and then they're, and then they're vacant.
And not, and not, I'm not, just again, not to, not to pin you down, but we, we also talking about, like, I, I haven't heard a lot in Camden about like loud parties at Airbnbs and things like that, where, where they're causing a disruption in the neighborhood per se. Anybody else?
I haven't seen that as a problem either.
Okay.
But what, what I, what I have seen as a problem is that the governor putting a moratorium on evictions has affected the rental market. Because, you know, if the governor can, can tell landlords that, you know, they can't, they can't, and don't have a right to collect their rent, but by the way, pay your property taxes, or we're gonna take your property, that's when you say, you know what, I'm going to vacation rentals. Government's not gonna, the, the governor's not gonna manage my real estate for me. And I think that that, that has had an impact.
Is the government still, still excusing rents?
No, no, they're not, but they've shown their ability to do that at their will, so.
Right, I mean, we, we can, I think, I mean, I think it's safe to say that that's, you know, in response to a pandemic, and, and it was a short-term solution, and maybe not a great one, to a, a much greater problem. And, you know, I can understand from a landlord perspective how it does put you in a bind. But I think that, that, I don't think that that's going to be a regular intervention from the government to say that landlords can't collect rent.
No, but I think that's part of what has put us in the situation we're in right now.
Okay.
So if you're saying, well, in the future, they're not gonna do that, well, maybe rentals will stabilize then.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's all I have to say for right now.
Okay, and Pat, what do you have?
I agree with the point that you made in the beginning. I think it puts a real bind on rent, you know, not just work, workforce housing, but any rentals in general. I mean, I remember coming up here at the end of 2010 or something and looking for a year-long rental, because we weren't sure what we were gonna do at the time. And it was really hard to find anything, and that's, you know, over 10 years ago. And I think it's probably just gotten a little more extreme since then. And then also, the workforce housing, I think that really puts a, a damper, let's say, on being able to provide in that area, simply because it's probably more profitable for people to be getting properties and doing other things with them. So I would hope to find some balance there, and I also see it as a safety let's say, because I think, I really don't know at all what hosted or unhoseded properties, how well they're looked at or not, but I think it's something that should be looked at. And for all of the reasons that were listed in the ordinances that I had read about. So I would like to see something like that established. But, and really, it's just to get a feel for how many short-term rentals there are out there and what we can do about it, because I think there is a problem with, as I said, just rentals in general and affordable housing rentals.
Yep, so safety is a great, is a great one. I've got it on the list now. And Jeremy, you had your hand up there?
Yeah, I just wanted to answer the question. They are not looked at now. To be honest.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but I just wasn't sure.
Not at all.
And I think, go ahead.
I, I just wanted also, you know, this has been, I think this is an issue that's statewide, and I've been advocating for this at the state Fire Marshal's Office for a long time in conversations with them. If you look through the Life Safety Code, and it talks about transient rentals, if you got three or more rooms, beds, in essence, beds, for rent, it's a transient rental, and it's a rooming house under the Life Safety Code. No municipality or the state has gone down that road. No one anywhere across the country's gone down that road. But that's how the definition look, reads in the Life Safety Code. It's just something.
Can you repeat that again, Jeremy? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't understand what you're.
So there's a Life Safety Code, right? It's part of the NFPA code suite of codes. And if you look in there about transient, about rooms for rent, in essence, it says that they are, in essence, transient rentals, which groups them into a category similar to motels or bed and breakfasts. But the state, or no, no state or no municipal agency across the country. Um, but the state or no, no state or no municipal agency across the country. Has ever gone down that road to try to say, okay, there's a single-family home. That was permitted and built as a single-family home, but now it's turned into this transient, in essence, a rooming house. If you look what rooming house, our definitions of rooming houses are generally. Uh, it's a place for X number of people for less than a period of time where they eat and cook together. Um, that's never been looked at. Um, that's kind of a, I, I think the red herring in the room, to be honest with you. Um, but it's nothing that is looked, I think it's important. I bring that up because that's the life safety piece. Uh, because again, there was a fire uh with some fatalities down in, I don't know if it was Edgecombe. I think Edgecombe, maybe six years ago. Um, and it was Airbnb rental. Um, and there was a, a fire in a house and there was some fatalities. And I, I think it's just, you know, you and I, if we're staying in our own house. And there's a fire, God forbid, you know where the bedroom windows are, you know where the doors are. In the middle of the night, if there's a fire and there's smoke, you know where things are generally, right? But if you're in a new house. You don't know that stuff, and I think that that's the life safety feature that I think is important um in this. That's all. My comments. Thank you.
Okay. Anita?
Thank you. Um, so. I, I think life safety is one major issue that uh we need to look at this, as Jeremy pointed out. I think it would be good to look at how we regulate or how um. Professional short-term renters as being, there's being bed and breakfasts and motels and hotels. How are they regu- regulated by the state and um what of those. Uh, are advisable to incorporate into uh this situation? There is a concern that there's sort of a. Gap in how people are cared for. I thought the uh. The uh. Elizabeth, what am I trying to say? Thank you. The Cape Elizabeth rules um covered that pretty well. I, I think they have a really good. Um, way of looking at it. So, um. I totally agree with Pat in that the, the, the problem, the major problem. That short-term rentals, yeah, I see, I see it as two problems again. Um, short-term rentals take living spaces away. From those who could be living year-round here, and. They uh really push up the prices a lot. I know when I went to rent the house that I finally finished renovating after a dozen years and put it on the market to rent. And um. Oddly enough, I felt almost, almost sheepish in telling people, no, I'm not doing a short-term. No, I'm not doing Airbnb. I'm renting this year-round so people can live here. And it was like, it was. It, it was almost like, that's not what people do anymore with something like that. Um, so I really felt that sort of shift in culture. Um. The. I think that um we will need to work on definitions. I found it difficult to find the definition of short-term rental. I finally did find it as being rented under thirty days. Um, I think the, the uh our little, our regulation that we had to look at. Doesn't, it, it talks about. Only there, only one person or a family living in a dwelling unit. And that's not realistic. There are many places where there are roommates that are not a family. Um, and, you know, so, so those definitions, I, I saw it uh shift. I saw the definition shifted um in one of the towns as a group. Um, instead of family. Um, I think there, basically, I think generally speaking, there's a lot to be. Picked from in these three towns. Um, and as I mentioned before, I, I think Cape Elizabeth had. Best one. I think Bar Harbors was very easy to read. I think Kenabunkport was diving deep into the. Legalese right away and hard to plow through and not a very um easy. Regulation to actually use. Um, Camden has a lot of absentee owners. And. Part, you know, one-season owners, so they come, they buy a house so they can be here in the summer. We have a lot of that. It's not unusual in, in Maine, in general, along the coast. Um, so, so when you say owner occupied, the owners more typically, probably. Especially because of taxation, their real home. More than half the year would be Florida, and then they come up here for the summer. They're not. Gonna be considered owner occupied, but it's been normal and then for. Generations. Um, that kind of use of a property. So how does rental of that property even for. A short term in the summer fit in? There's also uh the issue that we have here in Camden of uh workshops. So there's a Center for Furniture Craftsmanship. And there's main media workshops.
Yep.
And they have students who come for a short time and they need a place to live. Um, and they're not fully handled by the school themselves, themselves in terms of where they can live. So those are things, those are some of the pressures for the short term that we need to look at carefully as we. Uh, wrestle with this. Also, one last thing I may say, I just want to say, um, what came to mind. In trying to figure out how to do these definitions and limitations and strictures is that um there are those who. Uh, all family members who live here year-round who will go somewhere else for a month or for a while. And um are willing to rent their house out for even that period of time. We did that for. A number of times when we went to Europe for two or three weeks even. Um, so I don't know. Where those sorts of absences fit into this whole picture. Thank you.
I, I think that's a good point, Anita, and just, I, I, when, when we crafted or when the select board. Went down the road that they did last year um with the unhosted piece, the primary residents, I think the big focus from their perspective was. They wanted to make sure that people had the ability to live here. This was their home, but they were able to leave and rent their house out for a month, two months, three months, whatever it was. Um, to really help, I think, pay for maintenance and taxes. Um. You know, it's a significant issue on these, especially these big old homes require lots of maintenance. Um, and taxes are what they are, and I think they wanted to definitely be able to. Um, you know, allow those folks, and that's why they made the, the decision to say unhosted and versus hosted. It was for those people that they called as their home for tax purposes, um, they were able to do that without having to get registered.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's, that's a good, that's a good, um, you know, practice in general. Um, and, and I think that's, you know, part of where the hosted, unhosted, you know, as, as we get to it, the unhosted. But sometimes, you know, I'm sorry, I mean hosted, but sometimes vacant properties, right? So. Um, that, that makes perfect sense. Pete, uh, Nina, I just wanna touch on one thing. I, I understand you were talking about sort of the culture of Camden. And historically, but I'm not sure that um people who own summer homes are putting their homes in the market for short-term rentals. Um, you know, they may be, but, but I think if you run through. Um, and take a look at what's actually out there in Camden available. Um, I would say that, that we're not talking about people with summer vacation homes that often. Um, now, it may be that there are some, but those people certainly have the right to. You know, keep their home vacant and then live here for three months, and, and we can, we can say that that, that's, you know, the way it's always been. And there's not much we can do about it. Um, but I'm not sure how much it factors into the short-term rental market. I'll let you respond, Anita, and then I saw Mark with his hand up.
You, um, I, I would say that uh. There, just ancillary hearsay. Over the years, people, there is, there are such a thing as winter rentals. Okay, what's a winter, winter rental and why is it winter only?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there are two reasons for that. One is, is some, someone who wants to live here in the summer and not the winter, and the other reason is. They can get a lot more money, they can get as much in a week as they can in the, in a month. If uh they rent it um weekly in the summer, so.
Yeah, and I definitely have seen that, where you have someone say renting it for nine months in the off-season, basically, and. Um, that is more of a long-term rental. Um, than a short-term in my experience, but it doesn't mean that it's not, um. It's, I mean, we, we just have to figure out how much, I don't, I don't know how relevant those are still to the, to the discussion about. What we're talking about, which is a unhosted. Short-term rental that is really pretty much in the short-term rental market exclusively. Um, and, and that's, I think, what we're, what we're mainly focused on, but again, we can move this conversation. Wherever the board wants to go, but that's, that's what I've been.
Wants to ju- jump into the meeting, so I'm letting her in.
It's a long, it's a long tradition in Camden that people do summer. Weekly rental, so that's something we're gonna be facing.
Oh, that's, that's what you're saying. Okay, so I guess I'm missing, I miss, I was missing that point, so. You're suggesting that people who own. A prop, a house, are they living there? Are they the rest of the year? Or they just own it to rent it in the summer?
I don't really know what the details are. I just, I believe I'm not wrong in saying that there are. Plenty of places that for decades have been rented for the winter and differently for the summer.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, and I, I'm sorry, that's, I did misunderstand you, Anita. I thought you were talking about people who. Lived away and had a summer home here and just came up and lived for the summer.
You did not misunderstand me, Ethan. I just, I did confuse the issue.
You obfuscated me. All right, very good, nicely done. Um, hold on, I wanna let Chris out, jump in, Mark, and then I'll look and get you, get back to you.
Uh, Chris, oh. Thanks, I have a couple, just. Uh, Anita hit on something that I, I think we have to, I was gonna mention earlier, um, that. Coast of Maine, Camden in particular, is, has a long history of being a seasonal community. So, you know, we always joke about the fact that our population more than doubles in the summer. So, there is always gonna be a component of that. Um, whether that is that people come here for the summer and have a home that they own. That is summer, and then they leave for nine, ten months. Um. One of the things that I think is a trend that has really dissipated is you just were mentioning. Um, the sort of, you know, it used to be that you could rent. A house, if you lived here, you could rent something in town for nine months that was somebody's summer home. Relatively reasonable, and then you're like, okay, so for the summer, for two months in summer, I kinda have to scramble and whatever. But I can have this place in town. Those are very hard to find now. Like, those kinds of. I wanna call it not short-term, but interim rentals are now very hard to find. Um, just because the market has shifted. Um, in answer to your initial question, E- Ethan. Um, another thing that I think is, eh, we've talked a lot about. Or touched on it, but I think that the community accountability piece. If somebody owns their house and is renting it for six weeks in the summer, because that's how they help to pay their. Uh, tax bill and whatnot, if there's issues with their renters, we know who to talk to. Yeah, we know, we can say, oh, well, I, I know how to get in touch with the, with those people. What we're seeing, and I think that's why we really need to focus on the non-hosted piece. Is these entities who. Are elsewhere. Um, and if you look at some of the listings, they're also. I think that some of the regulation on some of the stuff is a little sketchy because. We're seeing houses that are maybe. A two-bedroom house, and you look at the listing and it says it can sleep eight people. Because they've put multiple bunk beds in one bedroom, they've got a pull-out couch in the living room. And that. We may not have had a lot of complaints yet on noise, but we also have noise ordinances and things like that, but I think that. This shift. Towards houses that are being set up, and what is that putting on parking and other infrastructures? Also something we need to think about. Um, the example I have is our little cottage down in Cushing. Our neighbor inherited the property from his parents. Took a two-bedroom cottage with a three-story barn and turned the barn into a unit that sleeps thirty people.
Yep.
And that's every weekend, there's thirty-five people showing up for a good weekend right next door. And he's not there. You know, I mean, that's worst-case scenario, but as much as we talk about it in town, I think there's a lot of properties out. In sort of my parts of town. That easily could be turned into multiple people staying in a house that, to Jeremy's points of fire safety and other. But just infrastructure and water and sewer, like, all of those things are impacted. But, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at a trip in the fall. And I need, I'm, I, it's me, and I'm looking at one bedroom, and you look at the one-bedroom, two-bedroom listings, and this is in upstate New York, and it says sleeps ten. And, you know, that factor, who's, who's monitoring that? So I think that's another thing that we really need to think about of how these are, and it's different than. My neighbor who rents his house for two months in the summer, because that's how he pays his property taxes. You look in Vermont, there are some that are sleeps thirty. Yeah. Um, just being honest, um. I, I will say, I experienced at least three times last year. That I can remember where there were people downtown with a truck full of trash. That they were trying to get rid of their trash, and I said, well, you guys should go to the, you know, the facility, solid waste facility. And I, I said, asked them where they were from, and they said, we Airbnb a house on the lake. And they were trying to dump the trash in dumpsters downtown. Um, so I just, that's another whole waste disposal, when you bring, talk about infrastructure. Um, that is, is not being addressed, so I, I think that's important.
Can I speak to what Chris O was just saying? Um, I've talked to. I've talked to Chris Farley about this very thing, about um how many people are in a house. That's their biggest worry is that there'll be a fire, and they have no way of knowing how many people to get out.
Well, well, not even, not even fires, sorry, but uh, I think it was like three years ago, there was a place maybe in Bitiford. That the deck collapsed. Cause they had like fifteen people out on this deck. And they were all rent, they were all staying in this one house.
It probably had the music on and they were all jumping together.
Yeah, absolutely, but I mean. You know, and several, like, we've had fires, we've had, like, all of these things are major safety factors that.
Yep. Yeah. Uh, Mark, I wanted to get back to you because I, we were, I wanted to make sure Chris O got in, and now I'm back to you.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Okay, it'll, it'll, if it comes back to you, just, you know, jump right back in.
What?
So we, we've heard a number, go ahead, is that Chris O again?
I, yeah, I just had, I, I made some notes as I was going along, and one other thing I just said is, you know, we are really focused on summer. Uh, but there are certain moments in winter where a lot of these places are, you know, especially like around the toboggan championship. This year, this year, especially post-COVID. People don't wanna stay in hotels, they're much more comfortable staying in Airbnbs, and so there were a ton of those, and you just start thinking, okay. So now it's a summer rental that's been fired up for the winter. Like, how's that playing out with pipes and water and?
Yep, and it looks like the um, just getting back to the, on the safety aspect. Um, I know that our ordinance does not have inspections in it, but the uh Cape Elizabeth one does. And they have a fairly hefty fee to uh jump into the, to, to file the application. If I recall, it's five hundred dollars. And I think that money is intended largely to offset the cost of having the code enforcement officer go out and inspect these buildings. Um, and the units for, you know, safety and, and those sorts of things, so. Um, you know, that's one way that that can be addressed, and, you know, I've got something up on my, I've got Airbnb up on my computer now. I, I don't use my computer for the meeting, I use the, my phone, so I can't share it, but it's um, it's showing, uh, what is it? Without any dates plugged in and not perfectly limited to just Camden, but it looks like I've got mostly Camden. You know, about a hundred and thirty-five stays in the area. Um, and, and these numbers. Um, and, and these numbers fluctuate wildly and I'm sure that there are many more. Um. The, uh. The, the firms that Jeremy has discussed, talked about, um, have given varying numbers of how many rental units there are in the town. And the part that he said that they can't do really is give us an idea of how many. Are unhosted, right? Because we don't have the algorithm to identify, you know. Six months plus one day. That's sort of the issue there. We don't know who's, you know, and Pat was right, maybe the homestead is one, one way to look at that. Um, Jeremy, do you recall those, um? Those numbers, I remember you giving them to the select board at one point, the, how many. Actual rentals and they were, they were wildly fluctuating. And I know that Allison raised an objection to. Some of it.
Um, you know, it's hard for me to tell you because at one point it was 380 something. I recall. And then at one point I, I got another number like 185 from another firm. Um, that's why Granicus, I think, is really important in the next week or so, because. You know, this is springtime. Um. I think this will be the, the, probably the, the perfect, the number is probably the most accurate at this point.
Yeah.
And I don't know why, I don't know why Allison disputed the number. I mean. You know, the, the firms doing this, this is what they do. Um.
Well, I think, I think the question maybe that's, uh, and I don't think she phrased it perfectly, but I think the question was. Um. How, how do we know that they're, um, captured, like at a, at a snapshot in time? That they're capturing every Airbnb slash VRBO rental? Right? Because there's some, there are some that are booked or whatever and that sort of thing. And that's why I did it without a date. But even that, I think would probably give us less than the actual number. Um, if there's no availability, if they're booked all the way through, then they wouldn't show up at all. So those are just some of the questions and I'm sure Granicus and, and other firms can answer that. But I think that's, I think that is, that is where the question comes from.
I will ask that question of them for sure.
Yeah.
Well, I think what, what complicates that number. That there Camden is destination. So a lot of people will post their listing as Camden. And in reality, it's Lincolnville, it's home.
Uh, yeah, but I've got the map limited to just Camden area.
And Granicus, Granicus narrows it down.
Yeah, they can do it. They can do it like by the actual town boundaries, but I've got it, you know, pretty much limited, you know, it's, it's, it's going out past, uh. Just to, just to the Camden Hills and, and out a little bit to McGonagall. And just in that area, it tells me there's 135 stays in the map area. That's just Airbnb. And there's not, it's not VRBO and it's not also, we have a couple of local entities, you know, local firms who do short term rentals in the summer as well. That just, that are exclusively vacation style management home before Airbnb ever existed.
Um, you can change your settings to show which ones are actually booked. So you can actually get that certainly from Airbnb. You can, you can do it. To see all of the ones. So I mean, like, the point is all that information can be pulled. It just takes. Someone really finding all of the sources.
Yeah.
Ethan, what I was thinking, another aspect to this I was thinking of, you know, I, I think it's important to outline our goals. But I think it's also important to. Outline the different kind of rentals that we do have here in town.
Mm hmm.
Uh, you know, one, one example of that is people on the lake. You, you know, there, there's, there are properties out there that have been in the family forever. And they come up every August. Well, so maybe they rent it out in July. And you, you know, that's where it gets complicated with a hosted and unhosted.
Mm hmm. Yeah. And I, and again, I, you know. We have, I think that's a very good point. Um, and. It's, it's not, it's not, I don't think our goal to completely eliminate. Um, unhosted, short term rentals. Um, but I think there, you're right that there's, there, there is nuance in there and some of this is going to take some. Um, some real, real consideration and, and, and careful wording to come to, as you say, come to the proper definitions. And I don't have the answers to any of this yet. Um, I don't think any of us do. Um, but that's the reason for the workshop and the conversation and. Um, you know, I can, I can put on one end of the spectrum, you know, the, the, as I already mentioned, sort of what I view is the, the. The primary offender would be someone who is simply buying a property as an investment to put it into the short term rental market. You're not going to have a, I'm not going to have a hard time explaining to the voters of the town of Camden. Why I'm limiting that business because the negative effect that it has on the town of Camden. That's, that's, that's the easiest one to sell. But when you're talking about, as you're saying, Mark, somewhere in here. Someone who has a camp on the lake, they've owned it for six generations. And they come up in August, but they ran it out from June through October. With the exception of August, they live in there and they do shorter term rentals, you know? That, that's a different story and I want to, I want to try to make sure that we don't eliminate that possibility. Um, you know, since they're not going to be in the. Houses that are typically not going to be in the full time rental market or a house for a family like they would purchase. To live here, like full year round residents. Are less a focus than the ones that are, that, that, that are. Either just full time, short term rentals, I guess is what I would say.
Well, and.
Well, you know, one, one way maybe to, uh, uh. Statistically. Isolate that is based on the number of, uh, rentals per year.
Yeah, I think that's what Cape Elizabeth did, right?
In a bunk court.
Oh, kind of bunk, yeah, yeah.
Cape Elizabeth did as well, I think.
Cape Elizabeth, was Cape Elizabeth the one that basically banned? Unhosted, short term rentals? One of them was pretty.
No, they did not ban it. Um.
Well, you have to have seven acres, I think.
Yeah, I think that's.
I think you have to have seven acres in, in Cape Elizabeth in order to do it.
Um, the, the other thing. Now, uh, primary residents unhosted no more than 42 days per calendar year in Cape Elizabeth.
Okay, well, that's a pretty short period.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, that's, uh, six, uh, seven day rentals.
So what can a bunk.
Six weeks.
Does. Which I thought was kind of interesting is that they base the number of permits or licenses. They give out on the percentage. On a percentage of toes, total residential dwelling units.
Yes, I think someone else does that too. I like that one.
The select board says, okay, we have X number of dwelling units, only X percentage can be, uh, in short term rental.
And, and one of them does 9%. I think that might be Bar Harbor. Um.
Hey, Ethan?
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to mention Stephanie, Stephanie French is on here. I don't know if you wanted to. Rope her into the conversation or at least ask if she's done any comments or questions.
Sure. I, I was, uh, hoping that if she wanted to comment, she would put up a hand, but I'm happy to. Stephanie, are you there hearing us?
Do you want any, want to say anything?
Thank you, Jeremy. I actually, um, I really am just listening to hear everybody's opinions on this because man, there's a lot. So. Where I'm going to be on the ballot for June, I am trying to gather all the information and get everybody's opinions on. How this should move forward. So.
All right.
Okay. Anytime you want to jump into the conversation, I think there's a feature on Zoom just to raise your hand and, and we'll.
I will, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Um, I just wanted to go back to something that came, was mentioned a little moment ago. That along with distinguishing. From the folks who have the place on the camp versus somebody who buys it from out of, from wherever. Um, we, somebody mentioned, yeah, I think Ethan, you mentioned the, the local companies. Um. You know, those, I know several of them. Or I know people who have worked with them. They're very part of the community and those rentals are often very well managed and well done within. Our community. So I think there also needs to be some consideration of. You know, no name. Website. Bookings as well. Ethan, I think you're muted.
Oh, he's muted. Ethan, you're muted, yeah.
Sorry about that. I do think there's a, um. There's the history of Camden as a, um, destination has been alluded to already and, and there have been, you know, these companies, these, that, as you said, property managers who. Are in the short term rental market and perhaps they're renting out longer term for the off season. Um, perhaps those houses are vacant. Um, I do think there's, uh, room for discussion as to how we should manage and, and include those. Um. It, it, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right that there's more accountability. Um, and, and, um, you know, it, again.
Typically. Typically, they work with people who live here more than doing it for anonymous. Investor donors. I just, I just want to sort of, that should be something we keep in mind as well of what.
I agree.
Of rentals. Like what type of rental agencies? I know some communities in Europe in particular have basically banned Airbnb.
Yeah.
Or the equivalents.
Yep.
Which might be.
It's a, it's a really good question. How do we handle the local rental agencies? Um, so we're still on the why part right now. I want to make sure we, we really get that. Um, you know, as, as Anita indicated at the beginning and, and Pat, um, to, to give us more of a. Of a framework so that we can target. Our, our. Changes to those whys. I mean, I think that's the key here. Being able to, to, to back up what we're trying to do by, um, having a good justification for it. And so. Um, does anybody else off the top of their head, are they able to, or in the time that we've been talking, have anything further to add to the? The sort of the whys. I mean, I'll throw one thing out there and I'm not even sure that it's something that I. Um. Described to, but there is an argument to be made by the lodging industry that they are regulated to a certain degree. And there's an expense that's associated with that. And that it's unfair to allow people to throw their properties into the short term market at a lower, lower price than they're able to offer their properties for. Um, without having to go through the same. Uh, licensing, safety checks and all those things. Um, you know, obviously hotels and lodging have been. Um, you know, faring fairly well in Camden for quite some time and their prices are pretty high. Um, and so for me, I think there's a balance between, you know, offering, um. Some competition there. And, and providing, you know, and also people who stay in Airbnbs often have different, um, needs. Sometimes they have a dog or, or, you know, have pets and they want to travel with. Or they want, they, they want to be able to cook in the, cook in the unit and those sorts of things. And maybe the hotel doesn't offer those sorts of things. But I do think it's worth putting on the table. That, um, hotels. And BnBs and Inns are, you know, held to licensing and safety standards that the Airbnbs and the VRBOs are not.
Yeah, I, I have a problem with that, Ethan.
Yep.
I mean, I, I don't think that is a, a planning board issue. You know, I, I don't think our, I, I think we get in trouble if. If we're using the planning board to protect and. Stabilize businesses, you know, we're, we're land use and, and property use, not. Ah, I, I think that gets into some fuzzy areas.
As long as you don't change the definition of dwelling unit. And keep a seven day minimum. The, the lodging industry has a huge benefit in that they can rent by the night. Nobody else can, except, um, a homestay.
No one else can, but they do.
Uh, exactly. But I'm just saying that's the, that's their benefit that they get for being licensed.
Yeah, I would say Bar Harbor, right? I mean, they actually. Um, a lot, make it a permitted use in certain zones. Short term rentals. They actually come up with a definition and they do that.
Okay. Um, I saw two hands up. So Pat first and then Anita.
I was going to say, when I was looking through these different ordinances, it seemed that they specifically. Um, said that places like motels, hotels, BnBs don't qualify for these short term rental. Licenses that, um, they were putting in place because they have their own. Uh. Or in its, some types that they need to follow. So couldn't we just?
I wasn't meaning to sweep them into the ordinance so much as offer. And, and, and I understand Mark's point. And I, again, I wasn't saying that it was necessarily a point that I was playing a little devil's advocate. But the, the argument could be made. But it, but you can still do the same things by doing it for a safety reason. Right? And, and you know, the inspections for safety. And occupancy rules for safety and those sorts of things. So it's not, I, I was just.
And parking and trash disposal and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's a good one. So we want to make sure we have. Uh. All those, what are those called again? Uh.
Standards.
No, I was looking for, well, like the, the municipal services type, you know, the waste disposal. And then impact, you know, all of that stuff. Infrastructure is good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now Anita.
Um, so I really like, uh, Cape Elizabeth's. Uh, plan, uh, suggestion, or what they do is they have a require a rental agreement addendum. Um. When they have a, when, when a short term rental permit is, um, taken out, then they require the owner to. Uh, provide a rental agreement addendum to their rental agreements. That takes care of a lot of these safety issues that have come up. This evening, contact information, emergency contact information, evacuation plan. Maximum number of tenants and guests, parking arrangements, good neighbor guidelines. Um, a copy of the miscellaneous offenses ordinance. And then you could add to that trash disposal. And things, things that, that we find to be crux issues. Um, can all be put into a rental agreement addendum that is required. Um. The, with regard to, uh, you know, the, this thing about. I'm frankly not that comfortable with the. Uh, minimum number of days a short term rental can be is seven days. I, I just don't like that idea. What I really do like, and I think is. Probably works just as well is, um, again, uh, Cape Elizabeth. Uh. They adjust the number of days per calendar year, something can be rented out depending on what type of. Rental it is. The primary residence hosted, they've got five different types of rentals, primary residence hosted. Primary residence unhosted. Which, as I mentioned before, uh, no more than 42 days per calendar year can it be rented? Um, seven acres plus. That's almost a half a year. Um, short term rental adjacent, meaning like across the street or next door, 105 days a year maximum. They also, um, talk about rental intensity. That's what this one time per seven days thing is. And I think that's a really clever approach.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't like the, you can, you can't rent it for less than seven days, but I do like the only, you rent it out only one time every seven days. It can be for one night, but it's not, um, seven days a week to seven different entities.
I liked that one too.
Yeah, I think that's interesting. Um, I will know as I, this is right, I finally found what I was looking for, but Jeremy had chimed in on this as well, but. On the, under the FAQs for Cape Elizabeth, my short term rental is not my primary residence. So what do I need to know? The answer is Cape Elizabeth does not allow a short term rental on non-owner occupied primary residence. Unless the lot is seven acres in size. So they do not allow. Essentially. Unhosted. Short term rentals.
That's right. Well.
And that's, that, and that, that is fairly draconian, but it is a.
They rent it, no, it says primary residence unhosted no more than 42 days a calendar year. They do allow that.
No, it's, it's, yeah, I guess that's where the language is, is a little confusing. Because it's still their primary residence. That means you're not there when you're renting it. That's different. Yes, but, but they're focusing on primary residence. And the way, and the way that we tried to define primary residence was six months plus one day. And that's what Jeremy says. And that's what Jeremy says they're having a hard time identifying. You know, but as Pat and and others have said, the homestead exemption is one way to look at that. Um, but but that that is a, that is a fairly strong um, a fairly strong ordinance. It's basically saying, you know, un-owner occup, un, you know, any home that's not your primary, any, any dwelling unit that is not your primary residence is off the the short-term rental market. Period.
And and what that does is that limits the impacts on the neighborhood.
Right.
I mean, the seven acres, your parking is going to be on the site somewhere. And your neighbors aren't going to hear it. Your neighbors aren't going to feel the impacts of it. Just throwing that out there.
Uh, could you remind me of the um, homestead exemption? What is that? Is that that somebody who lives somewhere more, you know, six months plus a day?
If it's your primary residence, you can, you can file for a homestead exemption with the tax, with the assessing office. It's your home. You're claiming it as your homestead under state tax rules. And you get a benefit, I think it's twenty thousand dollar reduction right now on your um, your assessed value.
And you're saying, does some people just choose not to do that?
Yes.
Well, I'd say that the town is a little crafty on maybe not making it that well-known to taxpayers. I mean, I didn't know about it for some years until my sister brought it up to me.
I wouldn't blame the town. I would say mo- many, many parts of Maine, people don't know.
And the town gets reimbursed for taxes lost.
Right. True.
A lot of people think there's an income requirement, that there's a income factor or other things. A lot of people just don't know the details of the law. When it was introduced, there was a lot of education programs statewide, but it's sort of filtered down and lots of.
I will say that the the tax, the the assessing office, I mean, there's other programs now, new programs, especially for um, you know, some senior older folks um, that have taxes be paid when you sell the house. Um, and the state covers it or whatever. I don't remember the whole program, but
Right.
Town assessing office is actively trying to get the message out there the best that they can. I mean, you know, we can only post so much on our website. And try to get information out there. You know, people are hitting the website, looking for it. They're not going to find it. Um, but people do every year. Every year I see people come into the office and say, I've never, didn't know this was a program. And meanwhile, the forms are there. They're available for everyone to file. Um.
You know, it seems like when I filled out my main income tax last year, it made reference to the homestead exemption tax and I think it
It did.
directs you to to fill out that.
Yeah.
Jeremy, um, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to give your input on the question of inspections. I liked the approach where when an initial short-term rental permit is applied for whichever type it is, is it, you know, as we've mentioned, Cape Elizabeth has five different types. Um, at that time, the code enforcement officer needs to go out and inspect. And then after that, an inspection is required once every five years. Uh, part of me was worried about overburdening the CEO and part of me thinks, gee, that's a really good idea. So I was wondering your thought.
Um, you know, I think it should be really a code officer and 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 fire department staff um, to do an inspection if that, if that's where the town goes. Um, I mean, the select board, I think, is pretty adamant as of late that people that are doing things with their properties um, should pay for the services that the town provides to them. So if you are going to register or have a more robust housing or a short-term rental inspection program and licensing program that's more robust than we currently have, which is no life, no inspections at all, um, then then that applicant should really pay for that. Um, the actual cost and it shouldn't just come down on the everyday taxpayers or the general fund or whatever. It should come be paid for by the licensing piece. I mean, that that is something that is certainly needs to be addressed and taken into account. It takes a lot of time. Right now, it's, I think it's twenty-five dollars to get a lodging license in town. Twenty-five dollars. It's in the, it's in the licensing ordinance. Um, and if you can think the amount of time that Janice in the manager's office, um, the code office and the fire department spend on doing licensing inspections. Um, and to charge twenty-five dollars for a business expense um, is really kind of crazy. Um, so certainly we will make the time to do these inspections and we, I think we will make sure that applicants are paying for the the services that we provide.
Right. That's the key.
And it's not falling out on taxpayers.
Right. I think that's the key is that there's enough money in the in the the licensing for the registration fee to provide for the time that it takes to do the inspection.
If we were able to, if we were able to change our definition in our current ordinance, um, regardless of changing anything else, if we were able to change our definition today, we could charge, come up with a fee that would pay for the services that this consulting firm, Granicus or whoever else that does this, that would cost. We would, and they do the enforcement, they do the reporting, they do the scrubbing of the of the sites. Um, it doesn't fall on us. I mean, that was the intent of that was that, you know, to create a licensing structure or fee structure that paid for the the, you know, the services that a consultant can provide to manage that system for us. And unfortunately, the definition prohibited us from moving forward with that. So we are kind of where we are now, but.
Yep. And Jeremy, real quick, do you have off the top of your head, uh, the number of uh, resident dwelling units in Camden?
Oh, off the top of my head, no. No.
There are about three thousand.
I was gonna say three thousand.
Tax bills that go out or something like that. I mean, it's in that range.
I I did ask this number of the um, assessing office to search their, you know, their database on this. So I have it somewhere. Um, um, I can get that to you. And that, and that would, you know, pick up all those two units and three units and twelve-unit buildings out there.
Mm-hmm.
But I mean, that would be one tax bill, a twelve-unit building, right?
Right. That's, the tax bills won't do it, but it comes.
It gets, it gets us up to the idea.
Yeah.
Or what about that KRT appraisal? Um, they had a whole listing of all of the lots they reassessed.
It wouldn't be hard to get that information.
No, the information's out there. It's there. I have it from the, from the testing office recently. I just don't have it on my head, on my head.
Okay, so um, we are, let's see, we're we're getting close to our five o'clock um, end time. So I want to make sure people are um, getting heard and and have an opportunity to speak on any issues. We focus a lot on the why. Um, Anita has spoken a fair amount on um, the, her fondness for the Cape Elizabeth plan, and I think it is a good, a good place to look at. Um, so uh, I just wanted to give everybody an opportunity to um, chime in on any, any issues that are, that are sort of front and center right now as we kind of wrap up this first workshop. And then maybe we can um, go back to the drawing board. I would like to see, um, I was wondering if anybody was, would be willing to um, take these three ordinances and sort of provide like a whether, I don't know, like an Excel spreadsheet or something that sort of says like, I don't know, categories like, you know, limits, allow short-term rentals under seven days or um, has a licensing or registration ordinance, has inspections and things like that. So we could get a little bit more of a lay of the land.
Yeah, I can do that, um, Ethan.
Thank you, Pat.
It's awesome. I hear one other thought. I mean, you definitely don't want to go down the road of, I'm I'm thinking of these other ones that are like bedroom rentals, short-term rentals, you can rent a room. Um, how do you want to classify those? Or I I think it's just something to think about as you move forward.
I think, what did you mean?
Well, it sounds like those are ones that are just going to be in somebody's house already.
Yeah, I don't think that's a focus for us. If somebody's renting out a room in their house.
Yeah, that's very much posted.
They're.
Yeah, those are hosted. Yeah, that's not our goal here.
Perfect.
So focus more on the unhosted?
Yeah, I mean, that's my, that's my intent. Yeah.
I mean, most, I I I think hosted and unhosted. It's what we want to focus on. We want.
Well, hosted means somebody lives in the, on the property.
Well.
It's their primary residence.
It's their primary residence and they live there. So I'm I'm not trying to interfere with people who who have, who who are trying to rent out.
I think there's a, there's a little gray area on hosted because in some of these things, hosted means like, I have an accessory apartment and I rent the accessory apartment, but I live in the house at the same time. There's also, but in in generally, like, the unhosted means it's someone who doesn't ever live in the house. But I think we've been talking about is that hosted means I live here six months of the year, nine months of the year, but I'm not actually on, I'm not actually in the house when it's rented. So there's that, there's like those three tiers of what I think we're looking at are the ones that are truly unhosted, that the person never lives in the property. It's not someone living there and it's, and is never there. That.
I mean, I think that's the, definitely the, that's the low-hanging fruit for sure.
You know, I can just um, include everything at this.
Yeah, because in a couple of these, in a couple of these ordinances, they they use the term ho- unhosted differently.
Right. Yeah, I think that's, that's when we're gonna, I think that's one thing we can work, sort of focus on. Um, it's, I'm really, I'm really grateful, uh, Pat, for you putting this on a spreadsheet. I think we could start looking at um, how we want to define those, start moving to our definitions. Um, because it's absolutely correct. There's primary residence, there's unhosted, there's hosted. And then there's, you know, some, as Chris, Chris O has indicated, there's some gray areas in there.
And you know, that that can get really complicated. And that's, that's what's making me kind of lean, lean towards the number of rentals per year. You know, so if you say it's six, e- even four, you know, you know, for either four or six uh, seasonal uh, or vacation rentals per year. You know, and and categorize it that way. So then if you're renting, and I mean, if you rent once, you rent for one week or you rent for two weeks, it's it, you know, I I don't, I don't know if it's important to regulate those properties.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I mean, again, yeah, so I, that that's, I think, where we're going to get into in our next, our next discussion because we can't really, that would be too much to bite off in this. Uh, but let's, let's definitely be thinking about how we want to do that. Um, and I think, you know, taking uh, the Cape Elizabeth model, not as where we're going, but as an example of a fairly strict model, right? Since they don't allow non-owner occupied primary residences on the market at all for short-term rentals. And then they limit the other ones based on the number of days per year. So primary residence unhosted, a total amount of uh, forty-two days a year, I think.
Right.
Um, and so uh, that's basically six weeks um, that they allow a primary residence unhosted. And we can, we can dig into the definitions, make sure that what we're looking at um, squares and and use those as as a way to look at ours. We don't have to use their numbers. But we can use that as a point to say, well, here's one town that did it this way. And and, you know, I I tend to agree with Anita that um, they've got a lot of really good things that, a lot of, I mean, a lot of thought went into this ordinance. And they may have made some politis, policy decisions that we do not want to make. That's fine. But for me, it it shows a good skeletal framework to start from and decide, you know, how far do we want to go on some of these things?
So basically, we want to um, we want to disincent uh, the short-term rental market as a way to make money. And take properties off the longer term. Um, you know, take properties away from being available, right?
I think the second part, I think the second part of that is right. I don't think taking away people's opportunity to make money is the right.
Yeah, that's not at all what I was thinking. I was thinking, uh, as an investment property only, yes, I tend to agree that that, you know, that that is harmful, I think, to the town. Um, but the, the, there are so many people who are renting properties that they own that that are their primary residents and they're renting them for certain periods or certain portions of the property, that sort of thing. They're making money. And, you know, you're allowed to make money on your property. Um, it's a, it's, it's, it's a fine line we have to walk. Um, but I I definitely wouldn't throw out that that we're trying to say that we don't want, we don't, we want to disincentivize people from making money. But I do, I will allow, for me, that that um, you know, absentee uh, uh, investment properties that are taken off the full-time market or out of the the purchase and sale market um, for people who actually want to live here year-round is is a problem for the town of Camden.
Yeah, I would hope to just, I mean, I suppose we can't undo what's out there already for short-term rentals, but I would like to see a cap potentially from having it get any worse. So even more long-term rentals or affordable housing doesn't get excluded even more, let's say.
I think it would be very helpful to actually have a conversation, whether it's one of the, our board's members or whether it's the whole board, I'm not sure, but with um, one of the companies in town that manages short-term rentals. I think we might learn some things that we didn't know about and, you know, what what are their issues? I mean, um.
I can, I can reach out to, I can reach out to a couple and at least bring them to the table.
Well, if we, if we get to any kind of ordinance, we'll be hearing from them.
We will, you will. And, you know, we're, we're, we're leaving for a year and we're going to rent our house out and we're trying to figure out how to, um, do we want a professional group to manage it? Do we want an individual who won't have a, some, won't have oversight? Um, you know, the, the, there are a lot of questions that way. So there are advantages to hiring a company that says, yeah, we're going to check on your house. We're going to, we're going to come in and and every month and have a look at how the renters are taking care of it and we're going to mow the lawn and, you know, all that sort of thing. So and, but their um, primary business is short-term rental. So when we approached them about a year-long rental, that was, well, this is kind of out of our league. So anyway, it's, I think it would be good to get their input because they're going to be impacted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that we want to, we definitely want to get this out um, before the town, before we actually craft an ordinance. Um, we, we want to be able to hear from people who who have um, you various view, different viewpoints on this and and make sure that we can um, address as many of the issues that people raise as we can.
And so. Ethan, where do we find that Cape Elizabeth ordinance?
Um, it was linked on the agenda, but I had also sent it around um, in a prior email after the last uh, planning board meeting or around the time of the last planning board.
I'll forward it to you, Mark.
All I have is frequently asked questions.
So it it was, um, it's a PDF uh, of the agenda.
Oh, that might be why, yeah.
At the bottom of that PDF are those links.
Mark, if you go to capeelizabeth.com, that's the town's, that's the town's website and it's on their website under, I mean, you can find it.
I'll forward it to you.
There's that search. You can just go to capeelizabeth.com and search for short-term rentals and you'll find it.
It's in the body of the email that Ethan sent. So if you're looking for an attachment, you're not going to find it. It's in the body of the email.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for um, for for your time and attention to this. I look forward to getting Andy involved. Um, so hopefully he'll uh, take a moment to watch uh, this discussion and then um, be prepared to contribute um, as well. And I really appreciate everyone uh, putting your time and effort into this. Um, next steps, Jeremy, should we set another meeting for this? Are we, I know we have a bunch of other stuff going.
Why don't we, um, why don't we just communicate via email in the next couple of days and and throw out some dates and we can work it that way?
That sounds good.
Yeah, we've got a pretty busy calendar the next couple of weeks here.
Yeah, I know we do. I know. And I just, I want, I'm glad we were able to get this sort of off the ground. Um, but we know that there's a lot of work to do. Um, so any, any time that we can put into this um, and become more informed ourselves is going to really be to our benefit in the long run. So thanks again, everybody. Does anybody else have anything else they want to add before we sign off?
I think I might, I'm not going to be able to spend a lot more time on this myself. I think I might, I'm not going to be able to spend a lot more time on this myself because of my plans. But I think what I might like to do is just send, maybe to whom, to Ethan or to Jerry? A, a list of bullet points that I picked up from.
Why don't you send it to me, and then I'll, I'll distribute it to the board, I mean, you're not supposed to have.
Yeah, it's supposed to go to the entire board, basically.
So if you send it to me, I'll, I'll send it to everyone else.
I'll send it to Jeremy, just, just some, some things that I, that I wanted to, you know, highlight.
And then, remember, we're seeing most of you on, on Thursday at one o'clock.
Thursday, one o'clock.
Uh, one, one quick question. I don't know if anybody else gets the MMA, Maine Municipal Association emails.
I do.
But they had several about this, the legislation in the.
Yeah.
And what changes, if people aren't getting those, or if Ethan, you are, if you want to share that, because that's got some stuff that's pertinent. A lot, the last, the last two that they said of why MMA is not supporting the bill and some of the amendments is quite interesting.
Oh, it is, I've been, I've been, I've been.
I'm sure you're following, Jeremy, but I, I just, even in part of this conversation, for those who aren't seeing those, it's.
Yeah.
There's a lot being discussed about in the last week.
It being short-term rentals.
No, it's, it's about housing.
It's about affordable housing, but it's, it's a state bill that's been proposed and that would have a lot of impact, and there's. Pushback because of it being a state-imposed one fit, one-size-fits-all policy.
Right, that's, that's the biggest concern against it, is trying to, is, is taking away the decision-making abilities of the towns. The latest amendment that I read said something to the effect of towns have the right to regulate the short-term housing market, and that's all it says about it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what. So anyway, I just.
We already can do that.
Conversation that we're having, it, it will have some impact for.
Yeah, I mean, if this passes, we're going to have to, we're going to be, have to amend our zoning.
Whole bunch of things, yeah.
We got a whole bunch of things, and it's pretty, if we thought going to two units was something.
Yeah, they open up, they open it up.
Yeah.
They open it up. They open it up.
So I, I noticed that these rules in these three towns, I think that they were all in. Adopted within the last year, or maybe year and a half.
Yeah, I mean.
And I expect that the short-term rental issue is an issue that is. Far beyond Maine, and there might be other smallish towns that are addressing the issue in, in creative ways.
And if you remember what, what Rockport tried last year and two years ago. With the moratorium, like, there's lots of communities are looking at this and.
Yep. Yep, all right.
But then we have one of our traditional old, very large. B and B ends on High Street, being converted by the new owners into a private residence again. So we have things happening at both ends.
Which one is that?
Hawthorne Inn.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just past the library.
Sounds good.
All right, everybody, that's been great, so thanks for your time again, and we'll meet, see you on Thursday at one, most.